This meeting is being recorded.
It's six o'clock on Tuesday, August 5th. I'll call this meeting of the Washoe County Planning Commission to order. Could I have a determination of quorum?
Jim Barnes?
Here.
Michael Flick?
Here.
Linda Kennedy?
Here.
Thank you. Dan Lizereski?
Here.
Kate Nelson?
Here.
Amy Owens?
Present.
Rob Pierce?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have the ethics law announcement, please?
The record. Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, number one, you've received a gift or loan; number two, you have a pecuniary interest; number three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship; or number four, if you've provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered here tonight, please remember to disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, please remember that you must abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. I'm going to go ahead and read the Zoom instructions as well. This meeting is being held in the county commission chambers. It's also being held via Zoom. If you'd like to attend the meeting via Zoom, you can log into the Zoom webinar using the link found on the first page of the agenda. You can also join by typing zoom.us into your computer, click "Join a Meeting" on the Zoom website, and enter meeting ID 842-7265-9406. If anyone has any technical difficulties today, you can join us via telephone only by dialing 1-669-900-9128 and enter meeting ID 842-7265-9406 and press pound. To provide public comment via Zoom, you can utilize the raise hand feature during any public comment period. To provide public comment via telephone only, you can press star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute or unmute. Thank you.
Thank you. And could I have the appeals procedure, Mr. Secretary?
Sure. Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you qualify as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within ten calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 775-328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open general public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I have no general public comment at this time.
Thank you very much.
In chambers, but do you have a hand raised in Zoom? Just a moment. It looks like Rhonda Tyser. Rhonda, could you please unmute? State your first and last name for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Rhonda Tyser. I am an Incline Village resident since 1991. I would like to express appreciation to Kat Oakley and Eric Young, who at least attempted to represent Incline Village residents' concerns at the two Incline Tahoe area plan workshops. Lamentably, none of our citizen concerns overweight TRPA's professed need to comply with California Senate bills SB 8 and SB 9 eliminating ADU zoning restrictions throughout the state of California. In the past three years since those laws were enacted, many Californians have experienced the drawbacks. Yes, allowing ADUs on any size parcel resulted in a building bonanza for realtors, but the result was the predicted story in neighborhoods where street parking disappeared, water and sewer mains were overtaxed, and old neighbors had new neighbors just feet away from their walls. Some Southern California charter cities fought back by limiting or severely restricting ADUs, and as expected, litigation continues. For the past two years, we Incline citizens have also fought back against TRPA's intent to allow ADUs on parcels less than one acre, because we knew what works in other places doesn't work in the basin and especially in Incline Village, namely, it's Incline and named thusly for a reason. Allowing ADUs will exacerbate our already significant parking and traffic problems, and requiring ADUs to have only one off-street parking spot doesn't even allow for a guest or a second car unless those cars park on a public street, which is not allowed on red days in winter. But of course, our main concern is not parked cars and drives or on streets. We are mainly concerned about extra cars cramming our winding two-lane roads in an emergency evacuation. For those of us in one of the 200-plus houses along Tyner Street with only one exit, one way out, the threat is real. I hope we never have a fire in Incline Village, and I hope no resident ever dies because they could not get out in an evacuation. But if such a tragedy occurs, those deaths will be directly due to decisions being made here in Washoe County. And those who make those decisions will carry that burden with them the rest of their lives. Planning Commission, please tell the county commissioners, you cannot make it more difficult for Incline residents to escape danger by increasing density along our only two escape roads. Thank you so much for your service to our community.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
No further public comment.
All closed public comment at this time. As far as the agenda is concerned, I understand that the applicant for item 8C, St. James Village, has requested to pull that item from the agenda tonight and have it heard at a later date. I don't have any other amendments to the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve?
This is Rob. This is Rob. I move to approve the agenda with that one subtraction.
Commissioner Owens, for a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. We have copies of the July 1st draft minutes. Has everyone been able to review them? Do we have any comments on there? If not, I'd like a motion.
This is Rob. I move to approve as written.
Commissioner Nelson, a second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. All right. We're on to public hearings. Mr. Lloyd, if you could announce 8A.
Yeah, this is abandonment case number WAB 25-0003 along Red Rock Road. For hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve an abandonment of Washoe County's interest in 20,606 square feet of right-of-way along Red Rock Road on assessors' parcel numbers 087-39010 and 087-38011. And representing Washoe County in this matter is Senior Planner Courtney Waikie.
Okay. May I? Okay. Good evening. Courtney Waikie, Senior Planner, Washoe County. As Mr. Lloyd just said, the item before you is WAB... Louder. What?
I hate to interrupt. You're going to need to turn on the clicker.
I'm going to turn on the clicker. Okay. I think we're good. WAB 25-0003, Red Rock Road. Okay. And the request is for an abandonment of Washoe County's interest in 20,606 square feet of right-of-way along Red Rock Road on two separate parcels. Parcel 1 is 308.6 acres and has a regulatory zone of specific plan, also known as Silver Hills. This portion of the project area has an approved tentative map, WTM 21-006, for 358 lots, single-family residential common open space subdivision, with lots ranging in size from 5,000 to 8,000 square feet. The second parcel is owned by the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, who operate a volunteer fire station on that same parcel. And that parcel is zoned Public Services PSP. The request is intended to accommodate the future realignment of Red Rock Road and for future residential development, as was approved in the tentative map. The Regional Transportation Commission confirmed in a letter to staff that the proposed abandonment is in conformance with the requirements of the Red Rock Road widening project. And that was included as attachment B to the staff report. Above you will see the overall vicinity map of the four different portions along Red Rock Road being requested for abandonment. And on the right, there is an aerial image with the specific square footages for each of those areas. And then we'll briefly go through here with a zoomed-in image of each of those different portions along Red Rock Road that are being requested for abandonment. And these were all included in the staff report. As required, all abutting property owners were noticed. No emails or phone calls were received in either support or opposition. All necessary reviewing agencies did receive a copy of the application. Their comments have been included in the staff report, and conditions of approval were included appropriately. Staff does believe that you can make all the required findings as explained in the staff report. And I have provided a possible motion for your consideration and am available for questions. We also have the property owner, and I'm not sure if the applicant is here, but the property owner is available for questions as needed.
Thank you. Did the property owner or applicant have their own presentation?
They do not. Just available as needed.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone on the commission have questions for staff or the property owner or applicant? Hearing, none?
No public comment on Zoom or in chambers.
All right. Any discussion on this item? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Rob, any motion? Turn on my microphone. Sir Rob, I'll make a motion for you. I move that after given reasoned consideration and information contained in staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve abandonment case number WAB 25-0003 for Christie Corporation, with the conditions included in Exhibit A, this matter having made all three findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code Section 110.806.20.
This is Kennedy, and I second it.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We're on to item 8B.
This abandonment case number WAB 25-0004, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve an abandonment of Washoe County's interest in a 130-foot portion of a 50-foot wide grading easement co-terminus with the northern property line of Lot 10 of Track Map 1413A. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Planner Tim Evans.
Thank you. Tim Evans, Planner. So the case before you today is abandonment case number WAB 25-0004. So the subject property is located at 2805 Old Ranch Road. It is 5.093 acres, and the area surrounding it and the surrounding parcels are developed with single-family dwellings and accessory structures, as is the subject parcel. The property is located within the South Valley's planning area, and the property is zoned general rural. So the request before you today is for an abandonment of a 130-foot portion of a 50-foot wide grading easement that is co-terminus with the front property line of the subject property, and it runs along the entire front property line. So there on the screen is the site plan that was submitted with the abandonment application. The area highlighted in yellow shows the entire 50-foot wide grading easement. The area to be abandoned has the red crosshatch, and then all of that is called out there on the screen, as well as the actual purpose behind wanting to abandon this portion of the easement. And the purpose is due to the applicant or the property owner wanting to construct a detached garage in that area. The majority of the property has steep topography, and this specific area here would allow them to build within an area that doesn't have as steep topography. So the project was sent out to multiple agencies for review. A total of 30 agencies received the project application for review, and one agency, that being the Engineering Division, provided comments and conditions, and those are included in Exhibit A of the staff report. So proper noticing occurred for the project. A total of seven parcels were noticed, and no public comments in favor of or against the project was received. And staff is able to make all required findings as detailed on pages eight and nine in the staff report. And staff recommends approval with conditions and provides the following possible motion on the screen, as well as in the staff report. And I am available for questions, and the applicant does have a presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. If the applicant would like to come up and make their presentation at this time.
Hello. My name is Kurt Hilker. I'm an architect representing the applicants in this procedure. I have a couple of slides I'd like to show you to highlight the steep topography of the site as to why we'd like to build and the grading easement. Can I click on the... Okay. This is the view from the street, where you see the dog run. That'd be about where we'd like to put the garage. As you can see, that area is relatively flat with the street. If we move forward. So that's an aerial view showing the house, where the house is much lower than where we're trying to put the garage. The majority of the lot is extremely steep. There's a gully behind it, and nowhere else is accessible. This shows it a little bit better, viewing it from the other direction, just how steep that goes. Okay. Now here, highlighted in the dark yellow, is steeper than 30%. Light yellow is 15 to 30. And you can see the arrow on the top left of your screen points to where we'd like to put the garage. It's relatively the only flat place on the entire lot. Thank you for your consideration. I'm available for any comments.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for staff or the applicant's representative? Do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment in chambers. No hands raised on Zoom.
All right. Any discussion? If not, I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
Mr. Rob, I'll make a motion. I move that after given reasoned consideration and information contained in staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve abandonment case number WAB 25-0004 for Chino Lemos, with the conditions included in Exhibit A of the matter having made all three findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code Section 110.806.20.
Commissioner Owens, for a second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Since item 8C was withdrawn, we'll move on to item 8D.
Okay. This is master plan amendment WMPA 25-0001, the 2025 Tahoe area plan update. For hearing, discussion, and possible action to adopt an amendment to the Tahoe area plan, the Washoe County Master Plan for Washoe-Tahoe, to add the Tahoe Transportation District to the development of a parking management plan, update a section related to transit, update sections related to pedestrian, bicycle, and multimodal facilities, update planned roadway network project details, update references to the University of Nevada Reno at Tahoe, and add dates to data tables. And if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. Any adoption by the Planning Commission is subject to the approval by the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and a finding of conformance with the Tahoe regional plan by the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Senior Planner Kat Oakley.
Kat Oakley, Washoe County Planning. We are back with a familiar item, which is the Tahoe area plan update, but just a small portion of it, which I will get into in the presentation. But it's specifically the master plan amendment portion of that project, which, as you may recall from your June meeting, had a master plan amendment portion, a development code amendment portion, which was the majority of it, and then a regulatory zone amendment, which is no longer moving forward, which I will talk a little bit about. So on the June 3rd Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission heard and unanimously approved the Tahoe area plan update, which, as I mentioned, included those three different items, including a previous version of this master plan amendment. After that hearing, we heard from a property owner about the proposed change to the Tyrolean Village special area, which was to remove that special area. I'll just jump forward real quick to a map so you can see. So that special area is, it was a one parcel special area that specifically allowed two additional uses that are not otherwise allowed in Tyrolean Village, that is bed and breakfast and time shares. And so the owner of that particular parcel reached out with concerns about this proposal and specifically concern about the removal of zoning allowances. And so though that is a regulatory zone amendment, the master plan references the Tyrolean Village special area in a list of special areas. And so if we were to retain the Tyrolean Village special area, which is what we are proposing to do, we need to retain that reference to the special area in the master plan, which we had previously proposed to remove in the version of this master plan amendment that you saw in June. And so that small change, the change to retain a reference to the Tyrolean Village special area, is the only difference between what you saw previously and what is before you today. And again, this item is only looking at the master plan amendment, so it's not including the development code amendment portions. It's just the text in the Tahoe area plan. And so to go back to this special area, as you may guess, we don't generally change the zoning of some of this property, especially when it's, in this case, it's a special area that's on one property. And usually, when the zoning designation on a property is changed, it's from the property owner's application or petition to do so. The property owner did express those concerns, and we had some conversations with them about those allowances. And ultimately, they expressed that they were in opposition to that change, and so that's why we decided not to move forward with it. And so what that looks like procedurally is that the regulatory zone amendment, which the only purpose of that was to remove the special area, that was withdrawn, so it's no longer moving forward. The changes to the development code related to Tyrolean Village, to that special area, were removed from the proposed DCA for the Board of County Commissioners. So we were going to remove basically the code that was only there to address the special area, but since the special area is staying, we need to retain that code. So the code on that topic will stay completely as is right now. And then the master plan amendment had to be modified again to retain that reference to the Tyrolean Village special area. So that is why we are before you all today, to look at an updated version of this master plan amendment. To just quickly go over what is changing in the master plans, specifically, it's these things on the slide. So adding the Tahoe Transportation District to the development of a parking management plan, updating a section related to transit, and a section related to multimodal facilities to reflect the TRPA Active Transportation Plan, which was adopted since the original adoption of the Tahoe area plan, updating planned roadway network project details to, again, more accurately reflect current plans, update references to University of Nevada Reno at Tahoe, which previously was a different university college, and then adding dates to some data tables that were in that plan for clarity. So those are the only changes that are part of the master plan amendment. And so it is part of a bigger project, of course, that you heard other portions of that project previously. And just as a reminder, we did do two rounds of public outreach on that project. First was a kickoff round, and then second, a draft review round. And the majority of the policy-related comments we received were in opposition to the TRPA Phase II housing amendments, which are part of the development code amendment package that you all previously considered. Again, in general, the concerns that we heard during public outreach were related to the development code amendment portion of the Tahoe area plan update process or project, rather than the master plan amendment portions, which is what you all are considering today. There's a recommended motion for approval, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. For myself, to clarify, we previously passed a master plan amendment that incorporated everything in this, plus removing the reference to the one special area in one parcel. If we didn't vote for this tonight, that master plan amendment has already passed here and passed the county commission, and we would just proceed as is to TRPA?
Kat Oakley, Washoe County Planning. That master plan amendment has not yet gone before the county commission, because we returned to you all to modify it.
Okay. And if we don't pass this with this one wording change tonight, you have what we previously passed, and it is missing a reference, which is basically typographic correction. You guys, if you wish, could still take that to the Board of County Commissioners.
Yes.
All right. Those are my questions. Anyone else on the commission with questions for staff? All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no public comment in chambers. I have no hands raised on Zoom.
All right. Do we have any discussion about modifying the wording for one reference to one special planning district on one parcel? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Commissioner Nelson, I'll make a motion. I move that after given reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt amendments to update the Tahoe area plan as set forth in WMPA 25-0001. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the resolution contained in Exhibit A on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission and to direct staff to present a report of this commission's recommendation to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners within 60 days of today's date. This recommendation for approval is based on the ability to make all five findings set forth in Section 110.820.15 per N.D.
Commissioner Kennedy seconded the motion.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item eight E.
Okay. Item before you tonight, master plan amendment case number W M P A twenty five dash zero 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 two, and regulatory zone amendment case number W R Z A twenty five zero 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 two for seven hundred Harper Court. For hearing discussion and possible action, to, one, adopt an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan, Tahoe area Plan, to change the master plan land use category on a five point seven four acre parcel from eighty percent conservative conservation, twenty percent residential, to one hundred percent residential, and, two, to recommend adoption of an amendment to the Tahoe area plan regulatory zone maps, to change the regulatory zone on the same parcel from eighty percent Mount Rose and twenty percent Incline Village one, to one hundred percent Incline Village one. Any approvals of the Planning Commission are subject to the, to final approval by the Board of County Commissioners and the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. And, three, if approved, authorize the chair to sign resolutions to this effect. And representing Washoe County once again is Senior Planner Courtney Waikie.
Thank you. Do we have any disclosures on this item?
Chair, Commissioner Nelson, I have a disclosure. In my private capacity as the Director of Public Works for the Incline Village General Improvement District, we do, our engineering department does engage with Xline Company to do TRPA planning for IFGID. However, I have not spoken about this with Mr. Xline nor his staff, and I don't feel it should hinder me in any way in making an independent judgment on this item.
Thank you. Ms. Waikie?
Great, thank you. Courtney Waikie, Senior Planner. The item before you is W M P A twenty five dash zero zero two and W R Z A twenty five dash zero zero two for seven hundred Harper Court. The subject request is intended to remedy a non-conforming use of a parcel with bisected master plan designations and regulatory zoning. Something popped up, apologize. Currently, the parcel has both residential master plan with, master plan land use category with Incline Village one regulatory zone, and a conservation master plan land use category with Mount Rose regulatory zone for that same area within the property's boundaries. The applicant wishes to amend the master plan and master, regulatory zones for the entirety of the subject parcel to be master planned and zoned as residential. The parcel is located in the Tahoe planning area, is five point seven five acres, and developed with a single-family dwelling built in nineteen ninety-two. And as I previously stated, has both residential and conservation master plan and regulatory zones. To better visualize the designations, you can see that one point one two acres of the parcel lies within the residential and Incline Village one master plan and regulatory zone, and approximately four point six four acres of the parcel lies within the conservation Mount Rose master plan and regulatory zone. As illustrated above, the existing single-family dwelling is located solely in the conservation Mount, Mount Rose master plan and regulatory zone portion of the parcel, and is considered non-conforming. Year-round residential uses are not an allowed use type in such designation. The only residential use type allowed in the Mount Rose regulatory zone is for summer homes. The Tahoe Regional Planning Agency defines use types in the Tahoe Basin, and summer homes are defined as a cabin-type, single-family house intended primarily for intermittent vacation use, and located in USFS summer home tracts or other remote recreation sites. Such structures are generally located in areas of restricted winter access. As you can see in the aerial image, the home is located in an established neighborhood and has year-round paved access from Harper Court. By amending the master plan and regulatory zone from conservation to residential, it would allow a change in use type from summer homes to your standard single-family dwelling. The applicant has stated that there are fire insurance implications with the existing use type or zoning, which they will be able to relay further. Since the agenda packet has been distributed, five additional public comments have been received and distributed to the Planning Commissioners. All expressed a concern for an increase in development potential if the parcel was to go from, go fully to residential versus that bisected zoning. TRPA, Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, has coverage restrictions on this parcel that the applicant will go into in much greater detail, but essentially they only can develop one percent of that parcel, or have an impervious surface of up to one percent, and of which the existing dwelling already exceeds that. However, under TRPA regulations, that coverage has been verified, so in no way could there be any more further development on this parcel other than what currently exists there today. And I am happy to explain that further because I know it's quite complicated, but I do think it's an important factor with the concerns that were raised by the public. All applicable agencies and county departments received the notification of the application. No comments in opposition were received. This issue was actually initially brought to our attention by TRPA staff, and while informally only, TRPA staff have expressed support for the amendment under the circumstances that have been described here and in the staff report. The requests still must go through all of their required processes to amend the area plan. Staff did receive a late comment letter from the Nevada State Division of Lands, which were also distributed to the Planning Commissioners, I believe either today or late yesterday. They did not specifically object to the requested amendment, rather their comments simply relayed that the adjoining parcels owned by them cannot be used for any required defensible space needs, or that the property owner could not store materials on their lands. This is already prohibited by code, and staff appreciates their comments and have shared the letter with the applicant and homeowner to make them aware. Staff does believe all the required findings for both the master plan amendment and the regulatory zone amendment can be made, as was indicated in the staff report. And staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution, resolution contained as exhibit A and B to the staff report. To amend the Tahoe area plan as set forth in W M P A twenty five dash zero zero two and W R Z A twenty five dash zero zero two. And I have provided two possible motions, one addressing the master plan amendment request, and the second being the request for the regulatory zone amendment. With that, that concludes my presentation. The applicant is here, and they do have a presentation that they plan to make. But I'm available for any questions until then.
Thank you very much. If the applicant would like to come up and make their presentation.
Good afternoon, or good evening, commissioners. I am a little late in the day. Nick Xline on behalf of the property owner. You know, I want to apologize at the onset. I was really hoping to minimize all TRPA discussion today, but we got those comments, so I'm going to have to bring it up, but I'll keep it short, and you guys can ask more questions if you need it. And so, yeah, I can just jump into it. I don't know where the presentation is. I think why that's being pulled up, I can provide the context why we're waiting for it. I think Ms. Waikie really hit it the nail on the head. Fundamentally, this amendment is being sought for fire insurance reasons. As I'm sure everyone understands, the complications with insurance just more broadly, as we've all interacted with it, but as fires become more of a prevalent item in the Tahoe Basin, the western United States, we've experienced in Tahoe, experienced in Washoe County, fire insurance is becoming more precarious. And so, really, the concern is having a bisected zoning, and if that structure was ever damaged in the event of fire, the fire insurance companies were not wanting to pay the dividend upon the, the structure being destroyed. And so, really, that's what brings us, brings us here today, is to ensure that we have a continuous zoning for the entirety of the subject parcel, that allows for that safety and security that is allowed if there's any structure, damage to the structure. And so we'll get into it a little bit further now that the presentation's up. All right. So, you know, Courtney got all, got over these different items, and so I won't be redundant for the sake of time. So really, this is the crux of the things I would like to discuss today, and really the whole goal behind this presentation, and the comments that the commissioners had received. And so, really, to, to miss, you know, kind of connecting to what Ms. Waikie had said, the, the proposed amendment does not increase allowable coverage, density, or development potential. And so this is the tough bit where we get into TRPA a little bit, but wanted to provide a little bit of context as to why that is. And so it gets a little bit kind of bleeped out, but you can see the subject parcel, the red square highlighting the subject parcel. All that kind of light yellow area is what we call in TRPA Class One A coverage. Kind of good rule of thumb as you're looking at allowable coverage in TRPA, flat, no water, classes six and seven, thirty percent allowable coverage. Steep slopes, water, one percent allowable coverage, limited development potential. And so you can see the subject parcel is all on Class One A. And so as Ms. Waikie cited, that's one percent allowable coverage. And so, the, the table you can see on screen shows the current parcel size, and with that current parcel size, only two thousand five hundred and eighteen square feet of allowable coverage would be permissible today. However, there is seven thousand four hundred and seventy-five square feet of existing coverage. This is really common throughout the Tahoe Basin. A lot of the reasons for having excess coverage beyond your allowable is, you know, primarily when the structure was built. If it was built before TRPA, or in the early stages of TRPA, coverage rules and allowances weren't quietly as restrictive and as held tightly as they are today. And so it's really quite common to have parcels that greatly exceed their allowable coverage. And so as you can see, if this amendment is passed, that's seven thousand four hundred and seventy-five square feet of existing coverage, that's all they can ever have, right? So, this amendment will not do anything that will allow them to expand their development potential. And I think that's really important, as we look to address the comments and really, you know, provide some context to the commissioners. Real quick, also just kind of, you know, reiterating what Courtney provided, just the boundaries and the locations. And so, again, kind of really hitting on the specifics. And this is, you know, kind of reiterating what I started with. The real goal of this entire exercise is to remove fire liability. It is a huge issue. It's becoming a problem. As a South Lake Tahoe resident, not sure how everyone's interacted with it down here, had my fire insurance canceled twice, and they're not all that pleasant to deal with, let's be frank. And so, this is really an important element for the homeowner and for the community to ensure that his investment, people investing, wanting to start, you know, family, great times in the Tahoe Basin, are able to ensure that they can rebuild in the event of the fire. And again, that's why we're here today. We did have a community meeting. Eight residents were in attendance, you know, very similar conversation. A lot of people had questions, you know, what's going to happen with development potential? What are you going to do? Can you build multifamily? You know, all the typical questions that might arise. And, you know, as Ms. Waikie did a great job, and, you know, I've stated multiple times today, this will actually do nothing. And so, all it's really going to do is provide continuous zoning for the entirety of the parcel, to ensure it can be rebuilt in the event of a major disaster. And I think the conversation with the community was overwhelmingly positive, and I felt, you know, a great volume of support from the people that were there. And I think post-conversation, kind of talking through the TRPA realities, what development can do, it really kind of swayed concerns that this amendment would create any additional development potential. And people were, you know, excited and supportive as we left that meeting because they're all dealing with the same fire insurance issues as this particular property owner. Really, you know, promised it wasn't going to be too much TRPA, and so, you know, want to make myself available for any questions or comments. Also want to, you know, really give thanks to, to Ms. Waikie and, and Mr. Lloyd. Washoe County staff is amazing to deal with, you know, throughout these processes. Especially, this really began, if you have any questions to, you know, why the zoning was it the way it was, it really started with a long kind of research exercises to commence with. So if there's any question in that regard. And then I'd also really like to highlight Jane Wolser, who works for my staff. Jane just graduated from college, U N R graduate. This is her first item that she's worked on being brought before the Planning Commission, and today's also her birthday. And so it's a great day to celebrate Jade, and really, Jade did a great job. I'm just the mouthpiece here today. So thank you so much, and please let me know if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Happy birthday, Jade.
Happy birthday.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. The seven thousand square foot structure, does that include the house or no?
Includes the house. So it's all impervious driveway, anything that water can't percolate through.
Oakley, so, hmm. Well, what happens if you reduce that square footage? Can you develop something else?
You could, you could in theory relocate that coverage. I would say for a lot of reasons that becomes problematic. Generally, building, you know, kind of up slope is not favorable. And, you know, similar to, I would say, the, the previous action, people look to develop where it's flat and previously developed to minimize cost.
I understand that, but could the density increase?
It could not.
If you reduce the size of the square footage?
The density would remain constant. And so what you can do in the Tahoe Basin, it's called coverage relocation. And so you're locked into that seven thousand some odd square feet. And so you could in theory pick a square feet up, restore that square footage, and so back to a natural state, and then relocate that somewhere else. That's something available to kind of all property owners in the Tahoe Basin. And so what it would mean in theory if you relocated that coverage, that the, the conservation area of the sum of the five odd some acres would still remain constant because whether it's seven thousand square feet here or over here, you're still restoring the, the area the coverage formerly existed to its natural state. So you could still never exceed that volume, and never increase density beyond what exists today.
Okay, so let me, if I may follow up on that. So, you can relocate the seven thousand on another square, on another parcel?
No, it'd have to stay on the same parcel.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and that's another, so as you, and I try to keep the TRP minimal, I do apologize. But, so as you look at it, there's, there's a lot of different coverage rules. It's incredibly nuanced, but really, is it, single family's probably the most straightforward. If you, whatever your coverage is on your parcel, unless you happen to be really fortunate and own the next parcel, which not many people are, your coverage is locked in. So this parcel couldn't take seven thousand square feet and move it to another parcel, another part of Incline Village, without completely retiring the coverage on the parcel.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no public comment in chambers. I see no hands raised on Zoom.
All right. Do we have any discussion or debate? Hearing none. I can make a motion. I move that after, well, we'll take them one at a time. We'll do the M P A first and then the R Z A. I move that after giving reason consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt the resolution contained as exhibit A of this staff report to amend the Tahoe area plan as set forth in the master plan amendment case number W M P A two five dash zero 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 two, having made all, all five of the findings set forth in Washoe County Code Section one ten dot eight two zero dot one five D. I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master plan amendments in W M P A two five dash zero 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 two as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign a resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Commissioner Kennedy seconds
All right.
the motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The master plan amendment motion carries unanimously for the regulatory zone amendment motion. I move that after giving reason, consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Planning Commission adopt the resolution included as exhibit B recommending adoption of regulatory zone amendment case number W R Z A two five dash zero 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 two, having made all the findings set forth in Washoe County Code Section one ten dot eight two one dot one five. I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed regulatory zone amendment in WRZA 24-0002 as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission.
Commissioner Owens for a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The second motion carries unanimously and that concludes item 8E.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a development code amendment case number WDC A 250004 for 560 Lake Shore. For hearing, uh, discussion, possible action to recommend approval of an amendment to Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, Article 220, the Tahoe area, to increase the maximum density for multiple family dwellings in the Crystal Bay condominiums regulatory zone special area from four units per acre to six units per acre and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. If approve, uh, if approval is recommended, the Planning Commission is asked to authorize the chair to sign a resolution to that effect. And representing Washoe County, uh, in this matter, once again, is Senior Planner Courtney Waikie.
Okay. Good evening again, uh, Senior Planner Courtney Waikie. Uh, the item before you or case number is WDC A 25-004 and the project name is 560 Lake Shore. The subject request is to amend the maximum density for multifamily dwellings in the Tahoe Crystal Bay condominiums special area regulatory zone from four to six units per acre. The applicant contends the increase in density allows for a more viable project and will incentivize redevelopment in the project area. And is the overhead of the, um, uh, outline of the entirety of the regulatory zone, including, um, uh, the, the four parcels and it's kind of hard to tell there with the dash line, um, but hopefully the staff report was a little easier to see the image. Uh, so the project area is 2.34 acres and has five parcels, two of which are airspace condominium units and one is a common area parcel. Currently, the maximum number of units the project area would allow is up to nine multi, multiple family dwelling units. The change in density from four to six units per acre would allow up to 14 units, which means a maximum of five additional multifamily dwellings would be allowed for the entirety of this project area. This scenario is unlikely as four of the subject parcels are currently kind of quote unquote built out or constrained due to past TRPA approvals for coverage purposes. The three most Easterly parcels there, um, are already developed with two detached single-family dwelling airspace condominiums with the common open space per recorded parcel map number 525225. Um, and I can explain that, uh, in more detail as it is a unique feature to the Tahoe region when I refer to something as a detached airspace condominium. On the ground to you and I, it looks just like a single-family home, but in TRPA land, it's an airspace condominium unit. And the ground underneath that unit is, uh, considered common open space. And that is due to the restrictions in the Tahoe Basin for subdividing. Uh, the parcel directly to the west of that area is developed with a commercial professional office space building and is deed restricted for coverage purposes for the project area of the parcel map that I just referenced. Um, and we did speak a little bit, uh, to coverage in our last case and public hearing, but essentially the, those two parcels can, cannot, um, expand in any way beyond what is already there for coverage purposes because they're already maxed out. Um, and we did kind of have just a brief, uh, intro on coverage previously. So hopefully that helped understand that. So to put it simply, there is no available coverage to develop beyond that, which is currently there today on those parcels. Further, in order to add any additional units, so even if they were to move or shift coverage around, um, it would require a map amendment to, or I wouldn't, I shouldn't call it a map amendment. It would require a new parcel map essentially. Uh, while the subject of the request is to increase the density for the entirety of the regulatory zone, the applicant has shared that their purpose in the submittal is to develop the westernmost parcel at 560 Lake Shore Boulevard. Approval of this amendment would increase the maximum number of units on this specific parcel from four to six, six multiple family dwellings. The site is currently, uh, developed with three vacant structures in association with the previous use as a gas station. It's likely that these would, uh, be demoed in a new, um, possible multifamily dwelling structure and/or mixed use project would be constructed. All applicable agencies have been, uh, contacted. No comments in opposition or of concern were shared. The engineering division did note that at the time of submittal for a building permit, any new multiple family project will require a traffic trip generation letter to be prepared by a Nevada licensed engineer and shall comply with the Tahoe area plan, Washoe County requirements, RTC, as well as NDOT. Staff does believe, uh, the commission can make all, uh, four required findings as demonstrated in the staff report and staff is recommending approval of the development code amendment request. And I have provided a possible motion for your consideration. I am available for questions. Um, and our applicant, uh, Mr. Phil, Philip Gillenfar, should and hopefully be on the line, but he.
The applicant is.
Thank you.
He's online.
They do not have a presentation but are available for questions.
If you'd like to say. Go ahead, Phil.
Yeah. This is Phil Gillenfar. Thank you, uh, commission, planning commissioners. Um, thank you Courtney and of course Trevor and the Washoe County staff for putting together this package and incorporating it into the Tahoe area plan update. I, I just, there was just one clarification. This is, uh, the Crystal Bay condominium regulatory zone and we're talking about just the special area within the Crystal Bay, uh, condominium regulatory zone. Historically, the Crystal Bay, uh, condominium zone incorporates all of the condos that you see along the lake from this old gas station all the way around the corner before you head into Crystal Bay. Um, higher density, all 99% developed. Um, and so we feel that, uh, historically this was a, a gas station for many years, far back as 1961. And, um, we really don't, we really don't think that it's appropriate to, let's say, rebuild the gas station, which is in allowed use. It's not even a special use. But by increasing the density, even just by a few units from four to six, it allows this, this piece of property specifically to be more in character with the other condominium densities that are all surrounding this particular parcel. Um, I know the question has come up a couple of times, is there a project proposed? And there really isn't. As, as Courtney indicated, we're really looking at trying to make sure that we have the potential for a viable project that, that is in character with the rest of the community and not necessarily a gas station. Um, so something like a mixed use or, or some additional residential units, very similar to what you find there immediately adjacent to the property. So that was my, basically just kind of my soapbox on that. Um, I have a lot of history in that neighborhood. I've been an architect here in Lake Tahoe for, for 40 years and lived in, in the area for, uh, much longer than that. Um, very familiar with this piece of property and, and of course familiar with TRPA and Washoe County's, uh, Tahoe area plan. Uh, so I'm available for any questions that the commissioners may or may not have of me, and so I'm available if, if you do have any. So thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone on the commission have questions for staff or the applicant?
Yes. Commissioner Flick, um, I'm a little confused. Are, are the developed parcels, um, separate legal parcels or have they all merged into one large parcel?
So there, Courtney Waikie, for the record, there are five separate parcels with their own separate APNs and ownership, um, two of which are airspace condominiums. Um, and that's where it just gets a little bit maybe confusing, but those are legally, uh, legal, I'm missing the term here, uh, separate parcels from each other. So there's five total in what is referred to as a special area, kind of a subsect of the Crystal Bay condominium regulatory zone.
Okay. So what, with those, uh, developed residential parcels, how many units cumulative are there there?
Currently, today, there are two airspace condominium units on one, well, on a common area, common open space parcel. And it gets a little bit tricky sometimes because I, I have worked up at the base and I may be getting my, uh, verbiage, uh, mixed up there. So please, Mr. Lloyd, correct me if I'm using the wrong term, but basically there are two airspace units on the one common open space parcel, but that, it equates to three parcels. And that, and that, basically the footprint of the building is, is the parcel.
Okay. So how many units, how many units are built now?
Two. And that is all that can be built without a map amendment?
Two?
Mm-hmm. Right.
All right. So on the parcel that has a gas station, and I guess the, uh, the retail office, if those were demolished, so, all right, if we rezoned this, then, and you said the density gets increased to 15?
So, so the analysis looked at the maximum units could be allowed for those five parcels. So kind of your worst, no, I shouldn't say worst, your most intense situation. Um, and the likelihood that those three parcels would be developed beyond what is there today is highly unlikely due to TRPA restrictions. So the only parcel that likely will, um, take advantage of this increase in density and just to be clear, it's not, we're not changing the zoning, we're just changing the, the density that would be allowed, that additional two units per acre. The only parcel that would in theory likely take advantage of this request would be that 560 Lake Shore, which has the, uh, the gas station. The other parcel has an, uh, an existing office building, but again, because of coverage purposes, um, that, that parcel too is, um, essentially restricted as well. And that's not to say they couldn't convert and make, in, I guess, could add units there, but it'll still fall within that maximum 15 units.
So we have a density of 15 for the whole shot.
For all five parcels.
All five parcels. Um, of that 15, two units are already built. Does that mean that the 13 remaining units can be built on the one parcel?
No, because it, it would be per acre. And so that's where that calculation for that parcel, I believe, and I don't want to state the wrong density, but I believe for that 560 Lake Shore, I forget how many acres, when you do the calculation of, uh, the six units per acre, it can go up to five units on that parcel.
Okay. So the max would be five acres for the one parcel if it's only one acre.
Five, right.
Okay. I just wanted to get a clear picture of what we're approving here. I don't want to hibernate going, uh, you know, to accommodate 13 units.
Right. It still has to have that proportional ratio, um, there. So, so just because the whole project area could, um, have kind of a carrying capacity of, if you will, up to that 15, you still have to have the acreage.
Well, I, and frankly, I, I, I wouldn't be, probably wouldn't be against that either, but I just want to know what I'm.
Right.
You know, uh, if we're just accumulating everything so they can, uh, build a higher density overall.
Right. Understood. And, um, I didn't make it a part of my presentation, uh, Mr. Gillenfar alluded to it. It is in the findings, um, and within the staff report, I believe, but it is actually the desire of the area plan to have, um, those higher densities in areas, uh, like this, which is in a town center. And, um, historically and throughout that area is up to 15 units per acre. So this is just a modest request to six units.
I, I get that.
And I just, like I said, I just wanted to know what we're allowing.
Right. Hopefully I didn't muddy the waters.
On that parcel that's not fully developed yet.
Right.
Thank you.
I do have, uh, Phil, go ahead, unmute and state your name for the record and then you'll be next, Linda.
Yes, and thank you. I, I didn't want to muddy the waters, Courtney. You did a great job kind of explaining that. I, I guess what, Commissioner Flick, I know it's kind of confusing. There's an area plan, the Crystal Bay area plan has all of the condos, Crystal Bay condominium complexes, and they're all separate properties. And they all are, were pre-built back in the sixties and early seventies and there are, you know, somewhere upwards, close to 15 units per acre on all those condominium parcels that were developed. The special area that we're looking at is just these, there's three parcels, and that might be an easier way to think of it. There's three parcels, one of which was approved for two single-family dwelling units and common area. That has a parcel map on it, which can no longer, without doing a parcel map amendment, it could not increase that density on that parcel with those two units. But they also have a stream zone in that unit, so TRPA would probably be reluctant to allow them to increase units based on the lack of coverage they have. Then the other two parcels, which is 560 Lake Shore and the one in between, in the three, three parcels that Courtney was referring to, one has a commercial building on it already that is an active utilized building. They may or may not decide to rebuild that, but if they did, under this new plan, they could put basically three units on that site. And then 560 Lake Shore, which is the subject parcel, you know, personally, someone who's lived here my whole life does not really want to see the property owner or a developer replace the gas station. Um, I would rather see something more conducive to the community of residential, et cetera. And that could then be six units because it's not even one acre. So that would be the maximum that could be built on that if it was replaced, if it was replacing the existing structures and the gas station that's there today. I hope that clarifies that, Commissioner Flick. It's kind of confusing up there.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for the clarification and I agree that the gas station, uh, a better use and more compatible use could be built there besides the gas station. So, um, okay. Thank you.
All right, Linda, go ahead.
I think my question's along the same line. So it's my understanding in these properties, most of it is already built up. Is that correct? And there's really only room for the one area to be built. So you're only talking about the increase of a couple more dwellings, right?
Uh, Courtney Waikie, for the record, Commissioner Kennedy, yes, you are correct. However, staff's analysis did look at, um, the, all parcels as if they were to have that density and did provide that analysis. Um, but the likelihood, as, um, also Mr. Gillenfar explained, that it would occur where the other parcels would take advantage of it, is likely not going to happen due to all the TRPA restrictions.
Okay. So really looking at only a couple, increasing it by a couple more dwellings, right?
Well, I believe it's three dwellings.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Any further questions from the commission for staff or the applicant? If not, do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment in chambers or via Zoom.
All right. Any discussion, debate, or a motion on this item? Any discussion, debate, or a motion on this item?
Sir, I'll make a motion. I move that after given reason and consideration of the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission recommend approval for WDC A 25-0004 to amend Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, Development Code, Article 220, Tahoe area, as provided in Exhibit A1. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the resolution containing Exhibit A on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission and direct staff to present a report of this commission's recommendation to Washoe County Board of County Commissioners within 60 days of today's date. This recommendation, recommendation for approval is based on all of the findings, of the following four findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section 110.8, 18.15E, consistency with master plan promote purpose of development code, response to changed conditions, and no adverse effects.
Commissioner Nelson, a second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the end of our planning items. Do we have any requests from the commission for future agenda items? For a request for information from staff, I'd love it if there were any update on what the progress is on the Incline Village evacuation plan, what the timeline is for the public to be able to see that.
This, it is a function of emergency management, and we will find out the status and, and bring that back to the planning commission in terms of, possibly a memo.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any further general public comment?
No public comment.
We are adjourned.